We'll begin with Mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gines. I have a second. Mr. Lawrence, second and any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Read the additions.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item five D and F pertaining to the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality for American Recovery Plan Act, adding item five J, purchase of one motor from Ocean Marine Group, and adding five K, special event agreement with King Master Biloxi for King Master Fishing.
Thank you. Chair entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
The motion was made by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gines. Any discussion? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Welcome everybody to the meeting today. It's my pleasure to ask Frank Bardot to come up and give us some insurance information. Thank you, Frank.
Oh, sorry. Are not where we want them to be at this point in time. This, these negotiations are going to be ongoing. The legal team, Mr. Abad and associated justices have been very involved in this renewal. They've done an excellent job of explaining some of our past loss history and explaining away a lot of our fears. And so, we are going to have a quote. I do believe that Britt is going to quote it. I don't believe the increase is going to be as high as I indicated in the budget meetings. You can see all the rest of our lines that we've gotten in are pretty much in line with what we were last year. And so, I'm confident by the time this renews that we will have a good program. I've not met with the insurance committee because there's nothing really to meet with them until I get terms and conditions that we can live with. And so, the negotiations will continue on.
Mr. Bardot, do you have any idea what it could be on the low end or high end? I know last year it was three hundred and seventy-five, six ninety-four.
It's not going to be less than four hundred thousand.
Okay.
My, my hope is right now, we, the, the terms that they're offering would increase our self-insured retention from one fifty to two fifty. That's a bigger deal than the actual premium. And I'm trying to keep that down to one fifty, and they're currently not offering a stop-loss, and that's unacceptable. And so, those are the two points that we're pushing back on right now.
All right. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Bardot?
Yeah, the guy here has a price to be determined. Do you have any idea? You kept saying about four hundred thousand. Where the, where are you looking at?
I'm sorry?
On the, the guy here, the top bottom twenty-two determined, got to be announced. You have no clue what it is yet?
So Berkeley, Berkeley's quote right now is four hundred and ten thousand, but they're, they're not, we're not going to go with Berkeley under their current, current terms as far as the self-insured retention and the deduct, the stop-loss, the lack of a stop-loss. Their law enforcement liabilities also included in the GL limit, and that's not acceptable. And so, we're going to have to continue to push on, on them. As soon as I get a quote from Britt, and I do believe I'll get a quote from Britt, then that will give me a lot of opportunity to start negotiating. Right now, Berkeley's the only shot. Liberty has not responded. Travelers has not responded.
So are we going to have insurance or not?
Yes, we have a quote that we can bind today. I don't, we, we need to work with the carrier. And conditions are a lot better.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Frank. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Counsel reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Had a busy weekend in City of Biloxi. And town room was packed, though. And I guess, can you tell about the towel run? I know a lot of people was everywhere, a lot of traffic in town, busy, busy. As you go through City of Biloxi.
Mr. Gines?
No report.
Ms. Newman?
No report.
All right, I'll just touch on Tunnels to Towers. Again, the amazing Councilman Barrett ran in the race, and he was leading at some point, but I think a few of them overtook him in the end. But he was competitive, as can be. But it was a great, another event on fire traffic.
Yeah, I was on a bike.
But a lot of traffic, but traffic sometimes is a good thing when you have events and there's a lot of people, you know, attending it. And we appreciate everyone, Police Department, and the support from the Fire Department. And making this event safe and just another incredible event. Very emotional event, but Biloxi's proud to, to sponsor it, and so is Margaritaville. Okay, we'll move on to the public agenda. Citizens comments. We have a total allotted time of forty-five minutes. Each person will have three minutes. When you're recognized, come up to the front and take your seat. Sign in legibly so that we can record it and state your name and your address so the clerk can record it. So I'll start on this side of the room. Anyone on my left? On this side of the room? Anyone on my right? Anyone in the back of the room? There being no one, citizen comment is closed, and we'll move on to the policy agenda. Item four A.
Orders to amend the compensation, compensation schedule and pay rates.
Have a motion? Do I have a motion on ordinance A, first reading?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Mr. Gines. Do I have a second? I'll second it. This is a first reading. Move on to item B.
Orders to amend the Point Cadet Marina Biloxi Small Craft Harbor.
By Mr. Lawrence and seconded by Tisdale. Mr. Lawrence?
Peter, this is about the little boards.
Yeah, this is to remedy a situation where some people are leaving. For another, another ten days or nine days. We're just saying any ten days within a calendar month instead of ten consecutive days.
They're trying to outmaneuver you? Yeah, we're trying, okay.
Any other discussion? There being none. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Item four C.
Orders to amend the Biloxi Land Development Ordinance for a new overlay district to be known as Biloxi Commerce Park CRO District.
This was motioned by me, and it was seconded by Mr. Tisdale. I could ask Jerry to come up and just give another overview of what we were trying to do here to be consistent in this park.
Okay, if you'll recall, when the Biloxi Commerce Park was originally designed, this is the area that faces Tommy Monroe Drive off of Pops Ferry, that it was under the oversight of the Harrison County Development Commission, and they had their own group of covenants, design standards for that property. So for years, the HCDC governed the, the way that the buildings looked in there. But a few years ago, they backed off of the park, and it then fell under the oversight of the, the city. Now, the covenants that were there that controlled design standards were in place up until last year, and those covenants expired. So what's happening here is that we've gone back to those covenants. There were some of the tenants in there that, that had voiced that they want to keep those design standards in place, even though it was under the oversight of the city. And we've taken that language out of the HCDC covenants that addresses the look of buildings and the look of the grounds. And we've incorporated that into this so that it will become a part of the land development ordinance.
Director, so things like setbacks, curbing, stuff like that, when a new business goes in there, we're, we're just trying to make sure it's consistent with the original look and feel of those original covenants, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir. Signage will also be addressed, and making sure that the, on any part of the building that faces a street, that it's a brick facade, those kind of things.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Why do you have to use an overlay district to do that?
Well, anytime that you adopt design standards that are above and beyond what the LDO requires, then you've, you have to let, design the boundaries for it. And so, you know, this was already a, a commerce park. It already had boundaries there. We're basically just taking those same boundaries and putting design review standards on it. This is very similar to whenever we establish a historic district. When you establish a historic district, then you have to go in and show where the boundaries of that historic district is going to be. And then you have the design standards that the people have to meet if they're going to make changes to the outside. This is really no different than that.
Well, I said, why you have to do an overlay district? You don't need that to do that, do you?
Yes, sir. You have, if you're going to, if you're going to establish something that's above and beyond what the, the land development ordinance requires, the basic requirements there, then you have to establish it as an overlay district.
So you're not eliminating anything. You're not eliminating anything. And well, you, it's not as free as it should be. Is that what you're saying? When you put on an overlay district, then you can do different things that you normally could not do?
Well, those are actually in, if you'll look in the packet, there's a list of the uses that are allowed in there, and most of it is business and professional. It also allows warehouses to go in. There's maybe a dozen different uses that are in there that show what you can use the property for.
Original intent, why it had the covenants that it did, they wanted it to have a, a business look to it, and it had certain requirements on setbacks, signage, like we mentioned, curbing. And the, those expired, our existing LDO for this area, the setbacks are shorter. The signage is not what the original covenants were with the Commerce Park. And so, we wanted to adopt those at the request of the majority of the businesses that already made the investment to have this look and feel of a professional-looking park. And that's, that's the reason why we, we wanted to put this in place. Okay, anyone else?
Oh, Jerry, I do, I'm sorry. Under the building section, it said, let me see, under standards subsection B is buildings. What, what is, do we have a definition for side street?
Well, the, there are very few of those properties that are in there that face a street. You know, you have Medical Park Drive that cuts through there. Essentially, most of this property faces Tommy Monroe Road, either one side or the other.
But the words themselves, side street, what does that refer to?
That's referring to any public streets that come through there, which would, in essence, just be Medical Park Drive.
It has to be a public street. That can't be referring to an alley for trash or...
Well, I mean...
The reason I'm asking is because I, I don't, I hate ambiguity, right? So there's some ambiguous statements in here, and some that, in my opinion, can be arbitrarily used, like, let me see, brick facing or another similar surface approved by the Biloxi Commerce Park Design Review Committee. Or if another, or of another similar surface approved by, like that, right? That scares me, that, that we could be unfairly applying a standard to different people, right? And so, I, I just wanted to know that side street, because that could be another application. If it's not specifically defined what a side street is, that can also be unequally applied to different people.
Well, the language that's in there, the, the language that you're talking about, actually came right out of the covenants. We tried not to change it unless there was a question about clarity in there. We tried to stick with the covenants that were already there so that the people that were located in there would already be familiar with, with what's there. But the, you know, do people challenge covenants? Try to make it say what they, they want it to say. But essentially, what we were doing there is to try and make sure that anything that is within public view, would, there'd be some regulation to make sure that it was very tastefully done and, and, you know, that they weren't putting trash sites out by the edge of the road or something like that.
Okay.
All right. All in favor? Opposed? Five to one. Item E.
Orders to amend the garbage collection and disposal fees.
Chair entertain a motion?
What's the second?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is second. This was made by Councilman Gines, seconded by Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Gines?
Usually we're, Mike Leonard usually give me a briefing on this here. This is for that chain that we decided to raise those rates so that we would be in compliance, Mayor.
Right, let, let me say, and being on utility authority, it was our burden rate was fifteen sixty-nine. It was raised through CPI and inflation, you know, utility authority to, or from Waste Management built in. I think it was a nine percent from their increase that we're passing on and then adding a little bit. So it totals seventeen cents on top of the sixteen eighty-three, which is our cost, which is what the city pays to utility authority.
Gotcha.
So, and again, the total being seventeen dollars, fifteen seventy-five. I'm not sure what the, what the rate was, but it was still the lowest around as far as collection fees.
Right, and, and is that in with the, because if I'm not mistaken, aren't they doing another increase with the utility authority?
No, that's what, there'll, there'll be another bidding, you know, at the end of the twenty-three, I think, or doing twenty-three, another contract will be bid. So there'll be responses from hopefully multiple vendors on the next trash collection with the utility authority for the municipalities in the county.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
Just adding seventeen dollars there, by the way.
Seventeen, yeah, right, seventeen cents on top to sixteen eighty-three.
Yeah, seventeen dollars, the, the, seventeen cents is the finish off the sixteen eighty-three, make it seventeen dollars.
Even, yeah.
Any additional comments from the council? There being none, we'll call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries five to one. Resolutions, item E.
Resolution affixing the tax levy for calendar year of 2022.
I'll move it.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence?
I'll, I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Gines. Seconded by Mr. Gines. Mr. Lawrence?
Has anything changed at all? Is it the exact same tax that we leveled last year, or was any adjustments at all?
No, same tax levy as was last year.
Okay, Mr. Gines?
None.
Any other comments from the council? Call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Five to one. Item F.
Resolution to adopt the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three municipal budget.
Chair entertain a motion? Chair will entertain a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence. Do I have a second? Or discussion?
I'll go ahead and second it.
Seconded by Mr. Gines. Mr. Lawrence?
Well, you have to have a budget to pay bills. That's the biggest problem we have with this. It might be a deficit, it might not be the right budget, but you have to have a budget in place so you can pay bills next month. If you want to move in and change it after that, then that's something we all need to look at. But I mean, you have to put something in place so you can pay bills. After that, we can adjust from there.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Gines?
I agree with George. Have to put it in place, even if we make amendments or adjustments. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? All right, Mr. Barrett?
Last week, I believe that there's a lot of good in this budget. We've, we've had the freedom to do a lot of things that we haven't been able to do in the past. However, I'll again restate my, my stance that I believe that, that we should have included raises for the other departments, and especially for our fire and our Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any other comments?
So I think that's something we'll definitely discuss. That's not going to go away. We're going to do the raises. We're going to stay on purpose until it gets it done. That's our job to make sure we have the raises put in place. That's, right, right.
As I said last week...
That will happen.
As what, as I said last week, as we did last year. October was a, a date, September, I mean, actually, January is when we implemented. It's still the plan.
Fine, thank you.
Anyone else? I just want to say this. I want to thank everyone again, the, the directors, the mayor's office, the council members that took extra time to attend these budget meetings. Some of them were very long, three hours, you know, plus. As with any budget, I, I don't think everyone was completely happy with it, but overall, we did our due diligence, and there's still more to be done, especially when it comes to some of the schedule for all the departments. Call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? That's four to two. Item G.
Resolution adjusting compensation for Director of Fire Department.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Gines. Mr. Lawrence?
We're just adjusting some of the pay for the next two, both of them to find a department, so it's just part of what we doing. I'll support that.
Mr. Gines?
Yeah, I think Fire Department Director's done a great, excellent job. I still don't think it's nearly enough. I think it should be a little bit more, but I'm going to support it anyway.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, was this adjustment accounted for in the budget?
Yes, sir.
I just, I, I find it eerily, um... Well, I guess I don't find the words, but, well, I believe that, that both the directors do a great job. Of giving certain department portions raises while not addressing raises of, of the remainder of the department. And like I said, while I think, I think the directors are phenomenal what they do, and I think they should be paid in the fashion we're paying them, but I just think that as we're addressing raises for some, we need to address raises for all, especially regarding the Fire Department, the remainder of the Fire Department. Leveling up the top portion while, while neglecting the lower portion, I, I think is irresponsible. And I hope that, that we can find some way to address the inadequacy of our ability to compete with other cities, especially at that lower levels of the Fire Department. You know, I've talked to tons of the firemen at many levels, and there, there is so much, and I talked about this last time we discussed this, that we could be in fear of losing a large percentage of our Fire Department. And we are not competitive in that regard with other cities. I think we need to take a serious look at addressing this problem before it occurs. I know we, we are looking at staffing issues with the Police Department. We have to become more aggressive with being able to attract new officers in the Police Department. We're very close to, to facing that type of catastrophe or a larger catastrophe, a larger scale catastrophe in the Fire Department. We really have to step up the ability to attract younger, new firemen or firewomen. That's all I have.
Mr. President, may I kind of...
Not older, years younger, okay. All right, anyone else have any comments?
President, I think the mayor was trying to get your attention.
I'm sorry, Mayor?
No, let me just add, and again, the position is stated, and we have to do this for, for the, these two departments. You know, again, we have a research in some incentives that will make us more competitive and price, salaries that will make us more competitive. It's just, it's just going to take a little time to finesse what we need to do. We want people to want to come to work and, you know, enjoy the, the benefits that we, we totally offer to them. And that will be worked out, as I've committed to, you know, between, after you adopt this resolution, so we can look at some things. And we do have some, some incentive things that would maybe require some opinions, but it's all in making our employees the best and, and, you know, incentive to come to work. So that's, I just wanted to add that. I can't argue with anything that we need to have our employees at the top. Biloxi at the top of the services provided to its citizens.
Thank you, Mayor. Barrett?
I second what Robert said, and the same thing applies to our Public Works Department. Chief Miller, Chief Geiser, I mean, you guys do a great job. It's not that I don't believe you deserve a raise, but I just, I, I've said this over and over again. And the only reason I voted for the budget is because we got to pay the bills. And it's not that I agree. I, I completely disagree that we did not give raises to these other departments, and nothing against our, our chiefs. You guys do an excellent job. But, you know, we're talking January first. I would like to see this done and in place by November first, within the next month. Us, us tackle this and give those departments and those workers what they deserve.
Real quick, President, real quick.
Mr. Gines?
And, and, and just footstone, what, what Councilman Barrett said, you know, your Parks and Recs and your Public Works, that same milk price that everybody else is paying, they're paying. And it's hard to buy that milk when you're barely making the rent. And some, so we're going to have to look at restructuring some of those areas. We got to restructure them to make them competitive so we can keep some of those people here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gines. Anyone else has a comment? I just want to say this, like Mr. Lawrence alluded to earlier, we have a budget that we put in place. We have these two resolutions in place. I think they're reasonable, these two resolutions that we have for the Director of Fire Department, Director of Police. This is not against any other raises or closes the door on discussing any other increase in compensation. Rather, I think it's the opposite. The mayor has been on record saying he's committed to looking at this and seeing what we can do going forward, that this is not the end game, that we will continue that commitment and try to put it in as quickly as possible for the other departments and positions. Anyone else want to say anything before we call for the question? Call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Item H.
Resolution adjusting compensation for Director of Police Department.
I know.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence? I'll second it for discussion. Mr. Lawrence?
I'm just adjusting. The Police Department just like to fight upon me. It's just an adjustment, just a step that we taking before we get to the pay raises for all the play, the people in the City of Biloxi. And I'm like Nathan, I don't care. We have a workshop next week. We can start that next week on the pay raises for everybody. Nobody up here has a problem with that. That's something we just need to do. So as soon as y'all want to do it, I'm ready.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I have no further comments. Anyone else would like to comment on item H?
Just Chief Miller, again, you do a wonderful job, and we're lucky to have you in Biloxi.
Okay, call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Need a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
Moved by Mr. Lawrence. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, seconded by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, Peter, four, D, E, and F, we had a substitute. What we change here? This is all, it's, go make some money in that.
The portal for the matching funds from the state, it opened up in the last week or so. There's a portal. You know, the state is committed to match our ARPA funds with their own ARPA funds. And these are to allow us to put these grants into the portal so they can look at them... they can look at them and hopefully accept them, and then instead of funding the entire project with our ARPA funds, we would only have to put up half. We're also working with the county on this, asking them to also put these Biloxi projects in the portal, and if, if that occurs, and we, we're working on getting the county resolutions together, then we will only have had to put up twenty-five percent of our ARPA funds to, to cover the entire project.
That's the, that's eleven million dollars that we dealing with, right?
Yes.
This is six million of that for each project?
These four projects total, well, whatever they total, and, and we have to see what, what we get as a match before we'll know how much we'll have to commit.
So if the county gets involved, there's another twenty-five percent we can save.
Yes, sir.
Or twenty-five percent more stuff we can get done, one way or the other. On this money, did we receive this money back, or once we spend it, it's done?
We've got the money already.
Say again?
We have the money already.
No, I'm saying, once we spend it, does anything ever reimburse back to us?
They're working out the details of if we, if we get the, the commitment that they're going to match it, then we can book that, and then it's treated like any other grant. We probably will have to spend it, but the timing of when they're going to approve it is all still kind of up in the air.
If we're successful, these eighteen or whatever the total is, we'll only be actually funding twenty-five percent of the total project if we're successful, coupling, or, you know, actually tied in with, with these projects from the county's end. They've submitted, they're asked for these projects, too.
I know we have three or four on the table. Do we have any others coming?
These were the most shovel-ready projects and have everything ready, which is going to be a big part of the scoring process. So we wanted to get these in because they're already, all the engineering work has been done, and they're ready to go.
They're just the first group ready. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Barrett?
I have nothing.
Anyone else have anything on the consent? Any exceptions? Mr. Lawrence, any exceptions?
No. None.
Mr. Gines, any exceptions? Ms. Newman?
No.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Demme, any exceptions? Mr. Barrett, any exceptions? I have none either. All in favor of the consent? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimous. There's no code enforcement hearings. I need a motion.
I'll move it.
All right. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gines. Mr. Lawrence?
Well, I know y'all cleaning up the point, but what, about money? Would he have received any money?
Good afternoon, council. See, I believe the last time I was here, I mentioned that we received two point one five million on Thursday, August eighteenth. We received one point five seven million on Tuesday, August thirtieth, and our next tranche of money is three point five seven million in the works.
So we stand on top of it.
Yeah. Let, let me say something, too. I don't know if y'all noticed, I think the people in, in the gallery here understand most of everything's being said today, because we have a little bit better working microphone and, and sound system, too. You ever feel like you can hear everything better today? So, we've been doing some work on the PA.
No good, better? This is the worst one. That's why I moved over here.
We can understand you, George, now. We can understand you now.
I gotta wait for the box. I gotta over here.
Yeah, okay. I hate to say all this stuff all the way down here, you know?
Good job. Mr. Gines, you have anything to add?
Mm-mm. I'm not from the point, so it's hard for me to understand, George.
No, it is.
I'm not from the point.
I know it's tough for you.
I have none.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments on the routine from the council? There being none. All in favor? Those opposed? Chair entertain a motion to recess. Moved by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gines. Discussion, all in favor? Motion carries. We are recessed.
All right.